Commissioner Rosales.
Here.
Sheriff Shaw here, Commissioner Shinde.
Here.
Commissioner Hall.
Here.
Carol Suizak with the County Clerk's office.
Here.
Please stand and join us in praying Saint Sandy's pledge.
Dear Lord, thank you for the range you have blessed us with. Please take care of our military wherever life takes them. Please pray that they move safely. Please help us make the best decisions for the county. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda, citizens to be heard. I have two. Mr. White?
A real brief. I was just, I had talked with Commissioner Rosales about being able to volunteer your time and equipment to work on county roads as a citizen. And the insurance came up, you know, about if a person would have insurance while working on the county road as an individual. And I would hope that the county could maybe have an insurance blanket policy that if a citizen qualified by either taking a test or having their equipment inspected, that they could fall under that policy so that it wouldn't be a financial burden since they're donating their time and their equipment to help the county. Maybe you might consider something like that. We need to look into that further, a way to kind of mitigate the cost of insurance on a, while helping the county maintain the roads in their neighborhoods, what I'm assuming, rather than all over the county. Anyway, that's all I was here to ask about. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. White. Ms. Hall?
Good morning. I would like to respectfully request that the Commissioners Court move forward and actively engage in hiring a progressive qualified road and bridge engineer or administrator to move our county into the 21st century on our road quality and conditions. The road grading that we've been doing for 40 to 50 years of moving the powder around has just, does nothing to help. Road graders came out the other day, we passed three of them. Actually, Maynard Road's last year, we just got it knocked down with about an inch of rain and we stirred it back up again, brought some grass and rocks back up, and believe it or not, the holes that are underneath the powder are still there. So, you're just absolutely wasting our tax dollars. It's got to stop. And Sandy Smith was a road commissioner. He had paved approximately 15 miles of road while having his budget cut. He also paid all the commissioner's salaries out of this budget and still managed to work with Teckstock to move forward, get some employees trained. If you go on the internet, you will find these programs, Texas Lone Star Road programs. They are so willing to work with you, they are so willing to tell you how to get material, what the proper material is, they are so willing to help you make a plan, to tell you how to, to work with you in all aspects. Let me just mention a few. Foundations, types of aggregate, pavement surface preparation, planning and design, drainage procedures, and training employees. They're, they're out there and believe it or not, on the first line, it says they're offered at no charge to county commissioners, county engineers, and road administrators. It's a county road agency offered by our state, it's no charge if we look into those types of things. Teckstock has a variety of services to work with our counties on plans for the use of the best materials related to quality and cost for your county. Please consider action in our county as our citizens are driving on dangerous roads. Dangerous. Thank you for your time.
The next item on the agenda is number six, and that's, I'm sorry, Carol, that's your, I, number six is to present the Gloria DeValley family bond, a shelter proclamation recognizing the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and allowing the county judge to execute the proclamation. Jennifer, you want to read it?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning. Whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security and humanity due to the systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, including abuse to children and the elderly, whereas the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people that cut across all economic, racial, and societal barriers and are supported by societal differences. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole, here in this community, throughout the United States and the world, and whereas women are not the only target, young wi, the young children and the elderly also are victims, and sadly, emotional scars are often permanent. And domestic violence costs the United States companies at least $3.5 billion in lost work time, increased healthcare costs, higher turnover, and lower productivity. And whereas it is battered women themselves who have been in the forefront of efforts to bring peace and equality to the home. Now therefore, we hereby proclaim the month of Oc- of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and call all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their participation in our effort to prevent domestic violence, thereby strengthening the communities in which we live.
Thank you, Jennifer. You guys do a great job here too, I've worked with you all a lot. Thank you for all you do. Sign me the motion that we, allow me to execute the proclamation before we go into the valley. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion. Jennifer, do you want a copy?
Please.
You can have this original or sign another original. You don't have this one, you don't want to say. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And the next one, is Mary here yet?
No, not here yet.
Okay, we can skip for a second, yeah. We'll come back to Mary. The next item on the agenda, number eight, would be to discuss, approve, disapprove an agreement for secure short-term detention of juvenile offenders between Corrins County and the Victoria County Juvenile Board and allowing the county judge to execute the contract. And the author's name, she's not in here. I can tell you what this is really quick. We do these every year with the juvenile offenders that we have. We have one with Atascosa, we have one with Victoria, and there's one more that I'm not. Go help me, go. Did I say it again? But anyway, all this does is allow us to detain our juveniles. And this is one of the centers that we use.
I'm making a motion to approve an agreement for secure short-term detention of juvenile offenders between Corrins County and Victoria, the County Juvenile Board, and allowing the county judge to execute the contract. One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
They're here, Judge.
They're here, thank you. Go backwards to number seven. You let Mary clear the door first.
Good morning. How you doing?
Good morning. We're here in, in, we're sponsored National 4H Week next week, so we're here to, for the proclamation for, for 4H, and Shane Fudge is going to start off, read the proclamation, Commissioners Court.
Where the Corrins County Commissioners Court is proud to honor the four achieve development program that Texas River Life Extension Service for 104 years of providing experience-based education to youngsters throughout the Lone Star State and whereas this ed- ed- program, which seeks to provide a learning experience for the who quality of child, including kid, heart, hands, and health, helps young Texans and acquiring knowl- acquire knowledge, develop life skills, inform attitudes, and enable them to become self-directed, proactive, and contributing members of our society. And whereas it's sixty-fourth, sixty-four, I'm sorry.
Sixty, sixty, 640,000.
640,000 urban suburban and rural youth particip- participants, bringing in, in age from eight to nine, to 19, hell, hell from diverse, diverse and ethnic, ethnic social, economic backgrounds, and truly represent a cross-section of the state and whereas the program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success that it sent, that it has had today were it not for the service of its more than 33,700 volunteers who have been given generous, generously, little time, talents, energies, and resources to the youth of Texas. And throughout it, whereas throughout its progress, our destiny, the 4H program has developed positive roles, models for countless Texans, and through its innovative and inspiring programs continues to build character and, and to steal the values that have made our state strong and great. Now therefore, be resolved at the Corrins County Commissioners Court hereby, today, this date of October 2nd through 8th, 2011, as National 4H Week in Texas, and commended the 4H use of the element program for the Texas River Life Extension Health, Extension Service, and the many men and women who have made the program a success.
Thank you, JD. The author, no JD, he's our county agent. For you young people that came to that, thank you very much. It's hard to stand up here in front of a bunch of people, and it looks real efficient when you're that age. Thank you, we appreciate that.
Judge, can we get a picture with, with the court and the?
Yes.
Yeah, can you go around the line?
We can step down if y'all are going to be easier. Might be easier to catch.
Well, it might be easier if y'all step up along the wall there, if you don't mind. We're trying to take up some of the course time.
Now, I might have to be in the front row. Thank you. Right, one more.
That's it? Thank y'all.
Thank you very much. Y'all.
Our 4H chairs baked some treats when they were out here too.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you, JD, thank you for doing this course. Thank you, guys. The next item on the agenda is to discuss road condition of County Road 125, discuss fundings for county roads, and discuss outsourcing for county roads, and the author, Sam Cowling.
Do you guys may approach?
Sure.
Just give me one. Can I give somebody two?
I have one speaking.
Oh, no wonder. You don't have an extra one, you can go get one. Okay, now, you told me the other day that y'all cannot accept gifts. These are not gifts. We need for evidence of crime. A crime against the county and a people living on my road. I've got a bigger one that I couldn't let them go in hand. That's what I've dug about a road. That's small but it's sharp. Over 30 D's, one that I got in the manner when I cut out the paper. Outsource it. The second set of staples items is what I'm going to talk about today. My expense, my memory is short. I want to have something in writing that I can see, and this y'all can look at and know exactly what I'm talking about today. On a stretch of about a mile, there are six homes on 125. Two of them are occupied by widows up in their 80s. One of them is a man in his late 70s, not in good health, a young couple, and a couple with grown children. If these ladies should have a left tire, a rupture in one of these rocks, who's going to change it, though? They certainly can't do it. This is just evidence of what the oil companies do when they're down there. Now, Mr. DeAcque gave me a price of between $60,000 and $70,000 to resurface Tleitzi Road. So that's, that's a big chunk. Now, I'd like for y'all to look at this section here, page three. And it's section number six. I'm not going to read the whole thing, I'm just going to get the pertinent parts. In consideration of the grain and the privilege hereby petitioned for, company agrees that whenever it show in any manner damage any county road or other structure by raging of operation here on, it shall immediately, at its own expense, restore the same condition it was before the damage replaced. I'm asking y'all, how many oil companies have stepped forward and voluntarily reported these roads, like the work before? Does anybody know? All right, now, the other part, you said, company further special agrees that whenever administrator, precinct commissioner, or the Commissioners Court, so notify either verbally or in written form that agents, servants, employees have damaged the road, that they will commence the restoration. How many times have anybody on the Commissioners Court notified an oil company that they've done the damage to the road? All right, one. Anybody else? Two. That leaves three of them. Okay, have they replied? And they restored the road?
We've got several roads ground, like a dozen roads.
Well, I mean, more than just ground, have they restored it and put it back in the same condition it was before? Did anybody do any follow-up with it? Did anybody turn this over to the county attorney's office to file suit against it? We're on a boom here, folks, but we've also got a lot of problems with getting the roads fixed, the coast getting fixed, and oil companies just not are stepping up to the plate. One of the things that you're going to hear about today, and now, you're only getting $500 for road use. That, if you should be, increases something a lot more than that. The, there's almost like it's all about five or six acres. It's about seven or eight hundred feet from my eastern fence. In 2009, they drilled a well. They sold it to another company. They started bringing it fill and leveling it off to get it higher. And I talked to a gager checking the well across the road, and he said they're going to drill three more wells on that site, bringing it to a total of four. That means instead of one round trip, bringing a drilling rig in and out, there's going to be four trips, bringing a drilling rig in and out. Four times the damage normally considered. Can y'all raise this thing or change it to a charge per well drilled?
That might have to be a question.
It's a, the oil companies and the trucking companies pay a larger fee for their licenses. And that gives them the right to use the road, and that gives them the right to tear the roads up. Now, big oil rigs, they get permanent from the state because they're way overweight. And I don't think much you can do about that. We can ask that they pay or pass an ordinance, which we have been working on, that they require to get a permit, but if you don't get a permit, then they haul over you, plus you can say, you know, the ordinance. It's a, it's a particular thing, because we do have the right to use the road as a property because we pay road taxes or whatever. But there is a point where the use of the road becomes damaging, overweight, whatever, whatever else that people, out here, that people are overweight or blocking, it's just cheaper to see overweight than with the, than by. I'm worried about that. So, there's a real problem with this thing. We need to, the answer, the question is, are you asking that, can we charge it so much per well? I don't know how we would equate the, the damage, how we could, in search of a way that makes sense. You can, I think you can charge them for damaging the road.
Okay.
But well sites are going to be different, and we won't have the exact same damage caused by one well site as you do another. But that makes a difference. The last couple we talked to has suggested, and I think that's on the agenda for today, that they will pay $8,000 per well site.
Or well hole.
Well hole. And that's good. But they came in and offered that as.
That's voluntary.
Yes, it is.
There are a lot of oil companies that are not going to volunteer.
There are some that have been volunteering too. I think Jim has told us in the past that there were, a couple that came in and even hauled out the road material while they were leveling, while they kind of leveling. How many of that, I don't know.
But what you're, what you're telling me, all right, Jim, just go back to this. Can you increase the fee from $500, which is basically an entry fee, if I understand?
Well, that was a permanent fee that we got for something already way back there. That needs to be modified also.
Okay, can that be raised to $8,000?
That gets a little sticky with the Office of Attorney General where he ran into that one.
The what?
The Office of Attorney General.
Okay, well, that's, that game be done.
No, no, that's not necessarily correct. We have to jump through some of the hoops. It needs to be worked on.
All right, now, let me ask you this. What does work on mean?
You've got to sit down and research and also talk to other counties, see what they've gotten by with. And we have some of those. Now, I think the next item on the agenda is a, a part of a assistant county attorney. I really need one bad right now. We just can't get to everything.
I talked to you one time about this section six.
Section six.
Six. That I just read about, where they agree that they're going to deal damage if not somebody locusts it.
Right, right.
And I asked you, had you notified or filed suit, and I believe you told me that you couldn't determine exactly what's oil company that done the damage. Can you take a shotgun approach and notify all the oil companies that are on that road?
Well, you can, certainly.
Why don't we?
He answered that, I'm sorry.
See, I come from their old school of work. If I want something done, I get out there and get it done. And I take what everything is legally possible to get it done.
I don't have the authority unless I'm given that authority by the Commissioners Court.
They've got to give you the authority.
Yes, sir.
Would the Commissioners Court give the county attorney that authority?
One thing that I do want to say, Mr. Cowling, is, wait a second, before we move on with that. We did, we did meet, I think you guys saw it all, Jose Alcida is our state rep. We tried to take an approach with the oilfield companies in conjunction with Teckstock. It was going to be all of us, not just one of us. Because their roads are, their highways are.
Oh, they're, they're tearing them up.
Well, we're all in bad shape, and somewhere along the line, we have more attorneys than we did commissioners and judges and Teckstock people.
You're, you're in the city of one whatever corner.
Yes, they were. And, well, and they actually, they weren't on corners, they lined the walls. And so, in, in order to do something like that, to find out, Airby Oilfield Company, and I think we did talk to one, Mr. Bussman and I did, to one oilfield company, and they said, well, prove to us how much time we've used that road, how heavy our equipment is, how many times we went down it, and, and, and all of a sudden, it was like, well, wait a second. It was not going to be, the outcome was not going to be what, what we thought it was. And I don't know if some of you guys have had the same problem of prove to me.
Well, not only that, but we need to have some idea of what condition the road was in prior to.
Okay, now, I'm going to get into that.
And that's a very, another.
Okay, now, we're talking, we're not talking about 18 wheaters, we're talking about 34 waders. You've got five axles on a trailer, three axles on a bike and tractor, and two axles up front. I mean, this is not just an ordinary 18 wheater going down the road. Okay, now. All right, now, to me, some red room needs to be set up to determine who should check the road link, road location before drilling takes place. Now, all these forms that they sign, these are filed in the county clerk's office. They're not filed in the ballot cabinet, they're stacked on a desk. We need to set up, the county needs to set up, and it's very simple, is to computerize these things as to what road they're on, what precinct they're in, when they start, when they end, and take pictures of the road. Pictures cameras are very cheap. Take a picture of the road before, or have Mr. DeAcque check it, and then take it after they're through. If you can computerize it, you can pull up, on the new ones that are coming onboard, and if you have a precinct number that goes on the application form, you can pull up once a month, a list of all the new permits that were issued. You can buy it out by the precincts and have the commissioners put it on their schedule to check the roads and see what they're like, take a picture, and bring it back. You can do that in a laptop computer and a $300 database. It's not any big mainframe situation you have to go into, that's just a fault. Now, let me raise this tactic. Corrins County is like a company. You'll have a CEO or a COO, Chief Operating Officer. You'll have directors, new commissioners, or the directors of this company called Corrins County. The registered voters are the Texas, are the stockholders. Now, the county's not in the business to make money, but it's in the business to be profitable enough that it can take care of the roads, the annex, and all other things. And most companies have an annual stockholders meeting. And if they get disappointed in some of their directors, you know what they do. They bore them out and they bring another. I'm not saying that as a crap, I'm saying, we need to operate like a company. Not a big company, but a company that, that is operating to make a profit. I think you need to outline the duties of each commissioner, so that if anything that needs to be done between the regular two weeks a month, they can go about it. If it's a matter of going out and taking pictures, then they can do that once they've been given the report. I talked to Mr. DeAcque about outsourcing road repair. I've given the judge two items, one was mailed to me in the post office box, and one was in the newspaper. They're advertising ranch roads. If it is possible that they can do it more efficiently, faster, and at less cost than the prison road department can, then certainly outsource it. Uh, you know, let Mr. Deppard do the regular maintenance. He doesn't have the staff to get out there and do these major repairs and get them, not in my lifetime, for the whole county. Alright, that's what, oh, I've got any questions? Oh, I did go up and look at one twenty-seventh. Are we, can, can we discuss it? I tell you what, there it is like a paved highway compared to my road. It's not that bad of what I'm used to seeing. Mr. Schindler's been out there, huh?
I've been over here just because...
Yeah. I go work, I try to go work once a week when I come in to do my job. The rest of the time, I'm out at the place, the gate's locked, and I'm attending my own business. Let me ask, may I ask, uh, county clerk something?
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't it be much trouble, either you or somebody else, if they had a laptop with a, a database built in it, to be able to keep track of these wells and where they were? I know you've got a lot of stuff going, you've got tables in the halls everywhere.
Yes, sir.
You'd make more money just charging the fee to get in and look at records.
We could get that approved. That is something I'm certainly willing to check into and, and find out about it, and, and I would invite you to come to the office and sit down with me and explain to me what you're talking about, and look at that...
When you get the county road next, then I will.
Absolutely.
Right.
Absolutely.
Because I use mine, of all, and I've got, it's easy to work unless you know what I ran, three companies with the same program. Insurance agency, data processing companies, and, uh, rental property. I use it when I'm looking for land, I could get, uh, the, uh, the size and the front, plus the figures, and tell me how many acres. If I'm building a fence, it tells me how long the fence is before I want the space, and tells me how many t-reps, how many, uh, wooden posts you have. I use it for all my CDs, my, uh, music. I can look up any artist, any song, I know exactly where to go. I do all my grocery shopping on it. I'm serious. When I go, when I go in, I just put in what I need, and, uh, how many I wanna have, how much I wanna have, I separate it from all work, and ACV, when I go in, I only buy what's on the list. I don't look in shop, I don't look around, I buy what's on the list, I know partially what's going to cost me, what it costs me in the bag. Thank you, good time, folks.
Thank you, Mr. Cowling.
Thank you, Mr. Cowling.
You've got ahead of yourself, Mr. Bustman, you're not next. The next item on the agenda is number ten, and that's to discuss, approve, disapprove a road use agreement between Corns County and Petrahawk Properties. You're not next, Mr. Bustman.
Number eleven is next.
Okay, we just did number nine. That's that new math they talk about all the time. So number ten is to discuss, approve, disapprove a road use agreement between Corns County and Petrahawk Properties and Petrahawk Operating Company, and I put that back on there, I put this also, it's back in your package, that's Bobby Garner with Petrahawk, he can tell us a little, you want him to talk to you now, so he can answer your question, is what I did.
Yes, ma'am, good morning.
Good morning.
We recently, uh, beginning last year, entered into a road use agreement with DeWitt County, and we would like to present this agreement to the Corns County Commissioners Court for approval, in which we will pay eight thousand dollars per well bore. And, uh, that, that would be as a good gesture to the county as well as helping you folks take care of your roads, understand it's a, it's a big problem. So far, I think we've paid, uh, DeWitt County over half a million dollars. Right now, we have, uh, around, see, we've got, uh, total of, uh, five wells, three pads built, there's several of those dual-well pads, and, uh, even though it's one pad with a twenty-foot extension on it, we're willing to pay eight thousand per well bore. Right now, I think you folks have about forty thousand dollars coming in on that agreement. We, we've got an additional, uh, four-well state, uh, we haven't started construction on, normally we pay that, uh, that fee once, sometime before that well is spudged. And again, we will send you a list of the wells that we're working on, along with, uh, a, uh, check for the ones that are current with construction. Our engineers tell us that we should, uh, drill somewhere around twenty-five to thirty wells in Corns County this year. And, uh, I think that's pretty much it. Again, this agreement, uh, we've had this agreement in, in effect with DeWitt County, and they seem pleased with it. They've even, uh, been able to persuade, uh, some other companies to consider it. It's hard to determine with all the traffic out there, you know, who's actually responsible for the damage, and we feel that this is a fair, fair way to do it, and would like you folks to consider that. Are there any questions?
I don't mind considering it, but I guess if you're doing it with DeWitt County, with the court, Commissioners Court, you're doing it with them, I would like to go ahead and talk with them, maybe we can talk to each commissioner, talk to three, talk to one, two, four, like that, and see what they're doing about it, because I understand that y'all might not be, you know, doing the total damage to the road and all, but eight thousand dollars, I just don't, do y'all have, is that just it, once we sign, that's all y'all have to pay, irregardless of how bad the road condition gets?
Yes, sir, that's pretty much it.
That's a problem that I have.
Yeah, yeah, I think...
Because then we cut y'all off there, and if y'all doing more damage, just for an example, say y'all only use that road that y'all are doing, that well bore, and y'all caused the damage, uh, one mile of road damage run up to forty, fifty, sixty thousand dollars, and I wouldn't want to do this to the citizens of Corns County to sign the paperwork that limits us to only eight thousand dollars, that y'all are gonna cause forty, fifty thousand dollars. I would like to talk to DeWitt County and find out what they're doing, and then maybe, I don't know, we could meet or something on it to talk about it, and if y'all are the only ones that are using that road, for example, y'all the only ones that have a bore on that road, and y'all caused fifty thousand in damage, then we can't come back to y'all if we sign up on eight thousand dollars.
Right, right.
See, I got a problem with that.
Okay, alright. Uh, we, we did add, uh, we built road, uh...